Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 21st, 2021 meeting of the Daytona Beach City Commission. We are delighted to have each of you with us tonight, and at this time, I would ask that Ms. La Magna review the procedures for tonight's meeting.
Good evening. Agendas and all exhibits pertaining to items on the agenda are posted in the lobby. Persons may visit City Hall during a public meeting to make public comments, subject to these city procedures and compliance with all recommendations from the CDC to minimize the spread of COVID-19. The commission chambers will be closed for in-person attendance by the public. City Hall lobby will be equipped with a lectern and a microphone for public comment and an audio/video feed to the commission chambers. Yellow forms will be provided for those who wish to make public comment before the commission. Persons may enter the lobby to speak on an item before the city commission when called upon for two and a half minutes. The lobby will also have a limited defined area with social distancing for people waiting to make public comment. In addition, the exterior entryway to City Hall will be equipped with a loudspeaker for persons waiting for permission to enter to make public comment due to space limitations in the lobby. The public may also monitor public meetings from their smartphone, tablet, or other electronic device on the city's website and enter City Hall for public comment at the appropriate times. All persons must comply with social distancing requirements while at City Hall, such as by remaining at least six feet apart and use of facial masks is mandated to combat the spread of COVID-19. Item number seven is your opportunity to address the city commission concerning any item on the consent agenda. Please indicate on the yellow speaker sheet the agenda item number of the item or items that you are addressing. Items or discussions not listed on the consent agenda will not be heard at this comment section. Agenda items under item number nine are public hearings, and citizens may speak at that designated time. Resolutions under item number 10 are also open for public comment, and citizens may speak at the designated time. All citizens completing a yellow form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach the lectern, please speak clearly into the microphone and give your full name and address. The two-and-a-half-minute clock on the monitor above the dais will start running when you begin to speak. Pay close attention to your time; you will be told when your time has expired. Item number 13 is the public comment forum, and it will convene after the adjournment of the business meeting. This is the opportunity for the public to speak on any issue that is not on the business meeting agenda. All citizens completing the green form will be allowed to speak for two and a half minutes. When you approach your lectern, please give your full name and address. Disorderly conduct in the public meeting of the city commission. Article 2, Section 6238 of the City Code of Ordnance reads as follows: It shall be unlawful for any person to behave in a riotous or disorderly manner in any public meeting of the city commission, or any committee, agency, or board thereof, or to cause any unnecessary disturbances therein by force, shouting, or any other action that is calculated to disrupt such meeting. Order affuses to obey any ruling of the presiding officer or such meeting relatives that orderly process thereof. Please be courteous and respectful of the views of others. Personal attacks on the city commission, city staff, or members of the public are not allowed. All conversation must take place either at the lectern or on the dais so that everyone can hear the business being discussed tonight.
Ms. La Magna, may we have a roll call?
Commissioner Henry?
Present.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Commissioner Traeger?
Here.
Commissioner Delgado?
Commissioner May?
Here.
Commissioner Cantu?
Here.
Mayor Derrick L. Henry?
Uh, here?
Commissioner Delgado?
Here.
Okay.
All right. All right, at this time, we will have our invocation by Commissioner Reed, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Henry.
Let us pray. This is the day that the Lord has made. I will rejoice and be glad in it. And, Lord, once again, we thank you for allowing us to open up our eyes and see another day, a beautiful day, a day where the sun has shined upon us after a couple of days of rain. But there's a song that says, "You've got to have rain in your life in order to appreciate the sunshine." We thank you for both. We need the rain in order to clean the air and to nurture our land, and we need the sunshine for things to grow and for us to get some vitamin D. So as we gather today, in preparation of taking care of the city of Daytona Beach, we ask for a unified mind. We ask that you would lead us and guide us, as you always do, and we'll be careful to give you the honor, the glory, and the praise. In the mighty and matchless name of Jesus, I pray. Let us all say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes of the February 17, 2021, regular city commission meeting and the February 24th, 2021 Strategic Planning Workshop. So move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Henry. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven-zero. We'll now move on to our agenda approval. If there are any changes, our city manager will address them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got several changes. We're going to add 6A to presentations is the introduction of the Daytona Beach Chamber of Commerce Directory of Advocacy. Move 8E is a consent order to administrative volumes for an explanation by staff, and to pull item 8N from tonight's agenda. It'll be deleted.
I move to approve the agenda with the said changes.
All right, we'll take a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner May. If there are no further questions, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number six, which was added to our agenda tonight. It's Mr. Jim Cameron introducing Mr. Sean Richmond from the Daytona Beach Chamber of Commerce.
I'm Jim Cameron, senior vice president of the Commissal Board of Public Affairs today on the regional chamber. I think for 10 more days or so. And, but, no, I mean, just, but that's why I'm here tonight, though, and wanted to thank y'all for letting me bring tonight Sean Richmond, and he is going to be our new Director of Advocacy for Daytona Regional Chamber. He'll be taking over for me. We've been working together this month, and he'll officially take over the reins and such, Mar- May the 3rd. So I just wanted to have him say some things about himself, though. Sean Richmond.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you and introduce myself. As Jim said, I'm going to be taking over for him, not going to replace him, because you can't replace Jim, as I'm sure a lot of you know. But I just wanted to be quick and introduce myself, and, you know, I passed out all my cards to you guys. If you guys have any questions of me, please feel free to reach out to me at any time. And thank you again for allowing me to introduce myself tonight.
So let me ask you a few questions, because I wanted this introduction to be on the agenda, and because Jim has been coming for 36 years, and-
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Wow.
That's long before I was coming.
Actually, 38 this month.
Yeah, and, and so it's been an amazing run, and clearly, you don't have an accent like Jim.
That's right.
But we won't hold that against you, but we look forward to working with you, and you're right, he's not someone that can be replaced, but we are excited because we value our chamber greatly. We really value them. They're tremendous members in our, of our community. I can't tell you how many projects we've had over the years that were important to the city, that Jim has supported in Tallahassee, that he's supported locally, that he has, you know, it could, it was just, even things that we're working on now, like affordable housing, they've been front and center in supporting those things. And, and I, we look forward to you continuing in that tradition, and we also look forward to you advocating for the things that are important to the chamber. It helps to keep us connected and grounded, and it helps us to recognize who, to, to respect those who employ and, and keep our city moving forward in terms of employment and giving folks an opportunity to work and earn a living. So we're excited, and I wanted to welcome you and say that we look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, we'll see you, buddy.
All right. Thank you, Jim, for your service.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number seven. This is the opportunity for people to address the city commission on any item that's on the consent agenda. Our first speaker is Frederick Brown, that's speaking on item 8A and 8J, and on deck is John Nicholson. Mr. Brown?
Is this John Nicholson's?
He's speaking on 8A and 8J.
There was a little confusion on the forms there. Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. Once again, it's a great opportunity to speak before the commission. In regards to item 8A, okay, that is a very timely ordinance that you did, Mr. Mayor. It's time to end it. We, 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 the public, would like to be able to sit in at the meetings. Again, especially for us senior people, those metal chairs, chairs are very hard when you have to sit in them for three and four hours. The other item I want to speak to is on 8J. Now, as you know, there was a property on Mary McLod Bethune-Cookman Boulevard, which went and underwent emergency demolition. Now, two things upset me here: why the city is being used as a bankroll for this, and why the owner of that property signed a statement saying that even though they owned 19 properties in the state, in the city of Daytona, that they could not afford to pay for the demolition of this. This is why I have a problem with the city being used as a, a bank account for a person that owns a particular property. I just don't feel that that's right. Now, that's fine for you to go after it, otherwise, there should be fines included. And I didn't see anything in your agreement that say that there was fines included. The fact that that property was allowed to fall apart, and I painstakingly went through every single aerial photograph, going back to 2008, it needed bad repair in 2008. It got worse in '09, '10, '11, '12, all the way up till where it fell apart and endangered the citizens of Daytona Beach. The city then rightfully took action to take it down, but where the city I am concerned about is paying for this, when it should be upon the person who actually owns the property. I also see no provisions for fines for this, and I also have to ask, Mr. Mayor, where is the code board on all of this? Why was this building to allow to deteriorate? It was obvious to me from looking at the photographs, without even leaving my home, how bad a shape this building was in, and how much it endangered the citizens of Daytona Beach. I trust, in the future, that the city will look at these properties with a little bit more of a sharp eye, ensure that the citizens don't get endangered. I mean, you've seen the pictures that were provided with the report, I know you have, with the concrete that just fell out of the building and landed on the sidewalk. That's got- Thank you.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson.
Before John comes, I want to say, I had, I wanted to ask about what we do down on, downstairs for the code enforcement board meetings, in terms of the, the way Captain Lee handles that. Those seats down there are much more comfortable, and maybe you could consider having folks, is there a TV down there and everything in 149?
Yeah.
It's conceivable that they could watch the meeting in there and be physically distanced, because we don't have that many people. So if you would look at that as an option for them. And I also want to say that, you know, Commissioner Cantu is in favor of, of opening up to more people. I stated that I would personally support that, but it's the majority of the commission's decision, and I, I want to remind everyone that I respect that and respect my colleagues that on, yesterday, six people in Volusia County died of COVID. 62 people in the state died of COVID. We are nowhere near out of the woods from COVID. So if I were one that wanted people in here, it wouldn't be more than five or six people in here, but I'm completely comfortable with some way of giving people more comfortable seating downstairs, they'd be able to see what's going on in the meeting, and then when it's their time to speak, they can just come right up the stairs or catch the elevator up and talk. So that's where we are, and we, we will always listen to you as it relates to your opinion, as it relates to that, but that's my perspective. Yes, ma'am?
I would be happy to support Commissioner Cantu and the mayor on that, in allowing people to come into the auditorium. I would be open to that. Is that what we're discussing a little bit, maybe five or six people?
Yeah, I was throwing it out, and that's, you would be open to that? You were the one that I thought was most opposed.
No, I've realized that when the people speak, the people speak loudly. They've been saying it for a few weeks now, and I think that we have a safety plan in place, I'm sure, of X number of people. Commissioner Cantu, do you have any safety plan in mind for that? I have no problem with it.
To the commission, commission, but I'm thinking every other chair, I mean, you said five, six people, mask mandate, I mean, whatever, I just think, well, they're only, you know, the only one in Volusia County that's not letting anyone in the chambers.
I don't know what the number is. It's every other chair doesn't seem quite good enough for me, but six feet would, would be for me, but it's, you know-
Well, most of the municipalities, I'm seeing every two chairs.
I'm not interested in following the rest of them.
I mean, but, I'm just saying, by every two chairs instead of, I mean, every other chair-
That means like-
Whatever, whatever you think.
Yeah, okay.
I just feel like we, I mean, there is some still that doesn't want to come in, but they have the option.
Mm-hmm, okay. Well, that's three of us. It's, it's up to the other four. If you get one other person that's interested, if you're not, that's cool with me, too. What, what, what do you all say?
I don't have a problem with it, because they're down there.
Okay.
Like five or six in here, and then opening the room downstairs, or more?
Yeah.
I would five or six. First come, first served.
You see that as problematic? Well, I threw out a number of five or six. I, I mean, we have how many staff members in here? Fifteen. Fifteen staff members. Commissioner Traeger?
I would be in favor of waiting maybe two more months. By that time, a lot more people will hopefully be vaccinated and have more immunity, but I am very upset at seeing the rising number of cases and deaths, and I would rather be a little late in doing it than being too early and know that more people died because.
Okay. Commissioner Delgado?
Does it matter if people have been vaccinated? Does that make a difference? Is there any, any difference in having people, you know, that have been vaccinated in versus not? I mean, I'm with, you know, I, I recognize people want to come in and sit, I think, every two seat, and as, if we maintain the social distancing, I, I don't know that it's a problem. I'm not too passionate about keeping, I'm not too passionate about keeping people out by any means, I, but I do think that we'd have to make sure that we could accommodate the social distancing. I don't know what that would be. I'd leave that up to the, the staff to figure out what the appropriate, you know, distancing would be in here, because it's not just, it's six feet all around in a circular direction. It's not just, you know, two chairs left or right. There's also, you know, going back, so-
Running back.
But, I mean, if we can do it safely, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure-
Maybe every other row?
Well, why don't we let the staff determine that?
If you wanted to come back with a plan of how we would implement it, we'll be happy to do that.
Okay.
And account for the staff being present, too.
Yes.
They got to be safe.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll, we'll be happy to allow you to do that and come back.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir. Mr. Nicholson, sorry for the delay, but thank you for your indulging us.
Not a problem. One of the comments that you were just making, you could get seven people here, two chairs between them, two rows between them. You can get another 12 right here that would separate them, four chairs, from staff. So you have plenty of room, and then you and I are, what, 40 feet apart?
Twelve.
That's a little bit more than the six feet. And 20 and I are, what, 20? So there is plenty of room, and it can be done on the agenda.
But you would have to keep your mask on?
Yes.
And, and you should have it on.
Well, it's very difficult to speak into here with a mask. I can't, I can barely hear you, and in the lobby, we really can't. So it makes it very difficult-
I do understand that, that's why sometimes I pull mine down.
The door's opening.
Okay.
On item number L, the $17,000 for someone to collect rent on the pier, I, I really don't understand. I know you put out an RFP for it. In the backup material, there's nothing there. I don't want to say it's wasteful funding. I know we're paying somebody from the Main Street CRA $7,000 a year to come once a month to collect rent from a property we own on Grandview. $7,000 to spend 10 minutes? I mean, that's a lot of money. So I'm asking you to look at this again, and why, if there's a reason, explain to us why we're, we're going to spend this $17,000. I'm wondering whether it was just a blurb on my phone, 43 restaurants are possibly closing nationwide, like IHOP, Denny's, Joe's Crab Shack. So there are probably 35 of those 43 are based, are here in Daytona Beach. Subway is here, Crystals is here. So if that's part of the problem, let us know. Secondly, I know you pulled N, and I understand the ability or the reason to acquire property when it's cheap. We should have done that on the beach side. When you could get a, a three-unit apartment for $6,000, that's the time to buy it. When you could get a property right off Main Street that would be added to a vacant lot for $7,000, that's the time to buy it. So I understand buying them for future, but for these, I know we're going to grow, but that's a very lucrative area, and what it does is it takes away from Midtown, which needs-
Yeah, it does need the population. That's one, true, you said.
Okay. And I believe that was my final speaker for the consent agenda.
Okay.
It's my final speaker.
Final speaker. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We'll take a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Reed. If you have any other questions or comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who are opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Now move on to item number nine, which is our public hearings. Item 9A is the Human Resources Department, implementation of money purchase retirement plan 401A for eligible sworn police officers and firefighters. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance approving a money purchase retirement plan 401A for sworn police officers and firefighters who accrue the maximum monthly benefit in the Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement Plan on or after June 1st, 2021, and establishing required employee and employer contribution rates for the plan, approving the ICMA Retirement Corporation Governmental Money Purchase Plan Trust Agreement, ICMA Retirement Corporation Governmental Money Purchase Plan Adoption Agreement, and the Administrative Services Agreement with the International City Management Association, ICMA Retirement Corporation, and implementation of the plan, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreements, authorizing future amendments to resolution, and providing an effective date. So move.
Second.
Well, we have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner Delgado. Do we have any questions or comments?
I have no public speakers for this item.
All right. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Moving on to item 9B, it's the Human Resources Department, Police and Fire Pension Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance on second reading, public hearing. An ordinance of the city of Daytona Beach amending the city of Daytona Beach Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement System, subpart D of the city charter, amending Section 5 contributions by amending the membership contribution to 0.50% once the member has accrued the maximum monthly pension benefit cap, providing for codification, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing an effective date. So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a motion from Commissioner Delgado.
I have no speakers for this item.
Okay, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Moving on to item 9C, it's the Public Works Technical Services Division, final plat approval for WC Grand. This is a resolution quasi-judicial hearing. A resolution approving the preliminary and final plat for WC Grand Replat, a residential townhome subdivision of approximately 0.9 acres located on the west side of Grandview Avenue, north of Braddock Avenue, and south of Goodell Avenue, authorizing the city manager to sign the final plat and permit recordation there upon meeting certain conditions precedent and providing an effective date. So move.
Second.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
I had no public speakers for this item.
All right. There are no questions. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Moving on to item 9D, it's the Development Administrative Services Halifax Hospital Medical Center Proportionate Fair Share Agreement. This is a resolution public hearing. A resolution approving a proportionate fair share agreement between the city, Halifax Hospital Medical Center, and Henning's Holding LLC, providing for payment to the city of a proportionate fair share contribution in the amount of $6,347.95 for local transportation improvements in relation to the development of a senior living facility on approximately 11.16 acres of land located on the west side of Clyde Morse Boulevard, north of International Speedway Boulevard, and south of Dunn Avenue and National Health Care Drive, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement and providing an effective date. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Reed and a second from Commissioner Delgado.
I have no public speakers for this item.
Okay, no speakers. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven-zero.
Okay, we'll now move on to item 9E. It's the Development Administrative Services. Oops, that is not correct. Item 9E is a resolution of the city of Daytona Beach relating to the state revolving fund loan programs, adopting the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Facilities Plan dated January 2021 for the improvements to the wastewater system, authorizing the submittal of the adopted facilities plan to the Florida Department of Environmental Detectives, and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado and a second from Commissioner Traeger. And all those-
And I have no public speakers for this item.
All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Did I skip over you, Shannon? Did you have something? Come on up.
I did have a presentation, if you want to hear it.
Yeah, we want to hear it. I always want to hear you, you give some good information. I didn't see you.
If not, I'll go back and sit down.
No, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I'm Shannon Ponitz, Utilities Director, and I'm going to be giving you guys a brief description of each of these projects. We have nine projects. I'm, I'm going to try to make it brief, but it does get a little complicated. In order for us to be eligible for funding through the state revolving loan program, we have to have this facilities plan adopted at a public hearing. It's a planning document. It does not obligate us to actually apply for the loans, but it gives us an available funding source. So the nine priority projects included in the plan were identified in a city wastewater master plan and a wastewater flow diversion study that was prepared in 2019 and 2020. For each of these projects, there were three alternatives evaluated, including a do-nothing scenario, but I'm just going to summarize the chosen alternative. Since we have nine projects, I'll try to make it quick. The first project is out at our West Side Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant. It's the Influent Pump Station and Headworks Project. With all the, the new development occurring in the West Side Regional Service Area, it's increased the wastewater flows and the collection system pressures. So the West Side Regional Plant currently has a headwork structure, and the pictures that you see on the screen are pictures of that structure. It provides pretreatment of the influent wastewater coming into the plant, and it has screening and grit removal equipment, so it, it collects the big stuff as it comes into the plant. The structure is 35 feet tall and, which requires all of the, the wastewater to be pumped up 35 feet to get into the structure. That increases the pressure on the force mains pumping directly to the plant, and also the upstream lift stations that are tied to that system. The headwork structure and the equipment are in need of major rehabilitation or replacement to address the equipment and structural deficiencies. In addition, the existing structure does not currently meet the plant's permitted treatment capacity of 15 million gallons a day. This project will construct an in-ground Influent Pump Station with a new headwork structure, taking pressure, pressure off of the force mains and the upstream lift stations. The project will also increase the capacity of the headwork structure sufficiently to meet the- In addition, the existing structure does not currently meet the plant's permitted treatment capacity of 15 million gallons a day. This project will construct an in-ground influent pump station with a new headwork structure, taking pressure off of the force mains and the upstream lift stations. The project will also increase the capacity of the headwork structure sufficiently to meet the projected 20-40-year wastewater flows as identified in our wastewater master plan. The estimated cost for the project is $21,016,000. This cost includes all of the soft costs such as engineering, legal, and administrative fees. So all of the numbers that I provide tonight will also include all of those costs. The next project is also out at our West Side Regional Plant. It's our clarifiers project. Currently, we have six clarifiers, and you can see them on the screen. They're basically settling basins. They kind of catch all of the solids, the big solids settle out in these basins. It does not have enough capacity currently to meet the plant capacity of 15 MGD. We're at a capacity of about 13 MGD based on the condition assessment of our master plan. So their plan is to construct three new clarifiers to increase the capacity also to the projected 20-40-year flows. The estimated cost for this project is $6 million, and we anticipate to start construction in March of 2025 and complete construction in June of 2026. And I should add that this plan is good for five years. So as long as we apply for the funding within five years, we can use this facilities plan to obtain the funding. The next project you guys might recognize, we're already in design for this project. It's a new force main out on LPGA, which is needed because of all of the growth that's occurring out there. This new main will be dedicated to serve all of the flow from Timber Creek Road south to the West Side Regional Plant. It includes the installation of approximately 16,000 linear feet of force main ranging from 20 inches to 30 inches. The estimated cost of this project is $9,848,000, and we... The anticipated construction would start in March of 2020 and complete in March of The next couple of projects that I'm going to go over are at our Bethune Point Wastewater Treatment Plant on the eastern side of town. And the first one is a new influent pump station. The current influent pump station is 58 years old. It's deteriorated, and it's in need of replacement. This pump station sends flow through an undersized force main to the headwork structure, which is located on the other side of the plant, and we've labeled those structures for you. The project will replace the station and upsize the existing 24-inch line to a 30-inch force main. The estimated cost for the project is $7,253,000, and the estimated construction start would be March of 2024 and ending March of 2026. The next project is Bethune Point Wastewater Treatment Plant, the effluent filters. What the effluent filters do is they polish the water after the clarification stage. They catch the suspended solids. Currently, the effluent filters at Bethune Point work fine, but they just don't... They don't have... We don't have enough capacity to meet our permitted capacity. So this project would construct four new effluent filter cells to get us back up to the permitted capacity of 13 MGD. The estimated cost for this project is $3,800,000, starting construction March of 2024 and completing in March of 2026. Okay, the next couple of projects that I'm going to talk about were identified in the wastewater flow diversion study that I mentioned previously. Bethune Point sludge is currently transferred from Bethune Point to Lift Station 5, which is a master lift station located on Shady Place adjacent to our municipal golf course. It's then pumped through a force main to the West Side Regional Plant. By not having the ability to de-water the sludge at Bethune Point, it limits the city's ability to redirect flow from Lift Station 5 to Bethune Point during wet weather events and long-term flow diversion from the West Side Regional Plant. The flow diversion study recommends diverting some of the flow from West Side Regional to the Bethune Point Plant to best utilize the capacity of each facility with respect to cost and projected growth. Basically, all of our growth currently is happening on the west side, and that plant has a 15 million gallons per day permitted capacity. Bethune Point has 13, and Bethune Point is only using about 4.5 million gallons a day. So we would divert flow from West Side to Bethune to increase capacity at West Side for the growth. The cost for this project is $5,960,000, and the proposed construction would be March 2024, ending in March of 2026. This next project is again related to that diversion. It's Lift Station 5 upgrade. This station was built in the 1950s, and it's identified as needing significant improvements to mechanical, structural, and electrical components in order to maintain the sewer service to the customers within the service area. It's located in that building, and it's on Shady Place right next to the golf course, and there's some pictures of the condition of that system, that station. This master station currently receives flow from 12 upstream lift stations, as well as a large portion of the city of South Daytona. It is then pumped to the West Side Regional Plant. When the flow diversion I spoke of in the previous project is implemented, an additional six upstream lift stations will be coming to the station. That'll take about 5 million gallons away from West Side and take it to Bethune Point. So we would just be building a new station. We would convert the wet pit/dry pit lift station into a new submersible lift station. Estimated cost for the project is $7,797,600. Construction to begin January 24 and end in January 2025. This project again is related to the flow diversion. This would take a force main, put a new force main in from Lift Station 5 to our Bethune Point wastewater treatment plant to get that flow redirected. Again, that would go down Shady Place. We would put in a 30-inch force main to provide flexibility during emergency situations, and this would allow the city to take the wastewater to either plant if we had an emergency. Estimated cost for the project is $3,457,500, and the construction would be anticipated to begin January 2026 and end January 2027. Okay, last and final project. Lift Station 34 Upgrade Project. This lift station is over on the beach side. This is our master station on the beach side. It takes most of the northern beachside area. Eight lift stations come to this station. It is located in a structure at the corner of Wild Olive and Aura Street. It looks like a house. So you can see that picture down at the bottom, and you can see kind of the...
Did you say Wild Olive?
Wild Olive and Aura Street. 510 Aura is the address. It does, it looks like a house. Anyway, this structure or station was built in the 1980s, and it has significant structural needs. So and it's also, we've got... We've had redevelopment interest in this area for a long time, so we anticipate that. So the replacement station would allow for that capacity for any redevelopment, highest and best use of whatever could happen on any of the vacant lands in that area. Estimated cost of this project is $4,544,000, and construction to begin January 26 and be completed in January of 2027. At this time, I'm done with the projects, and I'm going to turn it over to Patricia Bliss, our Chief Financial Officer, to go over the financial aspect of the plan.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Bliss, and I'm the Chief Financial Officer. And the need of the projects, the cost estimates, and the timeline were just explained, and I'll go over the SRF loan process itself. This slide shows a recap of the projects. As previously discussed by Shannon, the engineers' estimated probable construction costs were discussed when Shannon discussed it. This slide adds an additional amount. The expected draw from Shannon is $68,000... I'm sorry, $68,912,100. The capital facilities plan is valid for a five-year period. There is also things like the loan service fee, capitalized interest, as well as closing costs. So a contingency of approximately 25% was added to Shannon's dollar amount, which brings a not-to-exceed amount of $88,500 for all of her projects. The SRF loan process is a 20-year fixed-rate loan. In our calculations, we did an estimate of 1.5% to see if we could afford to pay for these. Right now, the loans are closing at 0% interest, so all you are paying back is the principal, and they're not expecting that to go up very much in the next couple of years. But again, this is a five-year loan process, so we did use for all 88 million, 1.5% on our calculation. The loan is also a drawdown-type loan, so it's similar to your personal construction line of credit. With a typical bank loan, you would pay the interest as soon as you close on the loan. With the SRF loans, you are only charged interest on the amount that you actually draw down and only from the date that you actually draw it down. The debt service starts six months after the project is complete, and given the quantity of the projects that we have and the overall size of the loan, the loan will be split up by FDEP into multiple smaller loans, and that's usually grouped by the starting and ending dates of the projects. And we are expecting that the first repayment of the first project loan will begin in fiscal year 23, budget year. The loan process requires many FDEP hearings and approvals, but City Commission has the final say. So whether you go forward or not, City Commission approves that item. The resolution and ordinance, which is under discussion for tonight, still does not obligate City Commission to move forward on any of these projects. It just allows the city to move through the FDEP process. The next step actually is a public hearing that will be held by Florida Department of Environmental Protection, and it's scheduled either for August or November of this year. So it is a fairly long process to go through. And the loans will be repaid by water and sewer charges after operating expenses and senior debt is subtracted. I believe that we took a reasonable and conservative approach to our projections. On the revenue side, residential and commercial growth between 2021 and 2025 was included for known large developments which are currently under construction or have been complete or have completed the plan review process. On the expense side, we started with our base data, using our consultant's expertise in the industry. Different expenses were escalated by their nature. So different percentages were used to increase chemicals versus electricity versus oil products. We also gave them information about our projection and past history of our salary increases and benefits. And based on the engineer's estimate of probable cost of construction, the timing of the completion of the construction, the revenue and expense projections, we concluded that the water and sewer fees will be sufficient to cover the cost of additional future debt service requirements. And now we are at the end of the formal presentation before the public hearing, and both Shannon and I are available to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions? Okay.
It must be done.
Yeah, these are the things that are not... This won't be in the news journal tomorrow, I don't think. But this is what we do as a city, you know? When I get ready to turn that faucet on, I want it to be clean. And I value that, and I think we all do. And this is what we have to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing your job.
Might I say, Mr. Mayor, that the ladies, they always do a fantastic job in their presentations. They're always so thorough, and you just know exactly what you're getting and what's going on. Great job.
Yeah, I agree.
Here, here, Commissioner Henry.
All right. Oh.
We had no public speakers for this?
Okay.
And we did have a motion.
Yeah, we had a motion and a second, and no speaker.
We already voted, actually.
Yeah, we voted before they presented. But we didn't have any speaker.
Then I will move on to item number 10. Item number 10 is our administrative items. Item 10A is the Finance Department Utility System Clean Water State Revolving Fund, CWSRF Loan 2021. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Daytona Beach, Florida relating to the state revolving fund loan program, making findings, authorizing loan application, establishing pledged revenues, designated authorized representatives, providing assurances, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado, a second from Commissioner Reed. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for May 5. Moving on to item 10B, it's the Development Administrative Services Redevelopment Division, Beaches ISB Plan Development/Redevelopment, PDRD. This is an ordinance on first reading. An ordinance amending the zoning map of the Land Development Code to rezone approximately 1.4 acres of property located on the northeast and northwest corners of International Speedway Boulevard and Peninsula Drive from BA Business Automotive and BR1 Business Retail 1 to PDRD Plan Development/Redevelopment, approving the Beaches ISB Plan Redevelopment District Agreement, authorizing redevelopment of the property with a variety of retail, restaurant, and other commercial uses, uses subject to certain conditions, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute the agreement, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Delgado, and the second was from Commissioner May. Okay. And let's see, we have Mr. Merrill here. Do we have any questions of Mr. Merrill? No questions, no comments? All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero.
The public hearing is set for May 5. Okay, we'll move on to item 10C. It's the City Manager's Office Board of Adjustment Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing one member to the Board of Adjustment for a three-year term expiring December 31, 2024, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to present.
Good evening. This agenda item is to appoint one member to the Board of Adjustment. This board has three vacancies. We have one application to fill a vacancy at large position from John George, and at large positions are recommendations of the mayor.
We have the only one is Mr. George.
Yes, sir.
We asked someone to nominate Mr. George.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Although, no public comment?
No public comment on this item.
All right, all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries seven zero.
Okay. Going to move on to item 10D, which is City Manager's Office Code Enforcement Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing one member to the Code Enforcement Board to fill a term ending August 23, 2022, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to report.
Appointment of one member to the Code Enforcement Board. We have one vacancy and two applicants. This will be a vote by ballot. The applicants are Catherine Marsh and Matthew Reinhardt.
And Mr. Mayor, Matthew Reinhardt has filled out a sheet to speak. Our first speaker is Matthew Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Council members. My name is Matthew Reinhardt. I live at 317 North Paul Revere. Can I speak without this? Can't even, it's hard to breathe. I live at 317 North... I live at 317 North Paul Revere Drive in Daytona Beach in the Georgetown subdivision. I've been there since 2016, but I've lived in Volusia County for 50-plus years. Recently retired from the Volusia County Division of Corrections after 30-plus years. Started off as a CO, retired as a warden. One of the many responsibilities as a warden was that of reviewing and drafting new policies and how they applied to the current correctional environment. When I first started the CO, I knew that in the back of my mind, I was entering an important job, and later, as time went on, I realized how important of a career it was, not just a job. A quick example of that responsibility was that of reviewing policies and procedures to make inmates safe and to make the environment safe. A quick example was maintaining the cleanliness of an institution or the ground surrounding it, and when people would think that would be minimal, but it wasn't. I mean, it was about taking care of the property owned by Volusia County citizens, people in Daytona Beach, as well as everywhere in the county. So what seemed seemingly minor was not, and I believe in the importance of maintaining policies and rules. I wanted to do more for the community. I'm very active in my HOA for Georgetown subdivision. I recently accepted a position as the Vice President of that HOA, and I wanted to continue that back to the city of Daytona. When this opportunity arose, I saw an opportunity for myself to try to help out. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out and introducing yourself, and I greatly appreciate that, and your willingness to serve.
Yes.
In your retirement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
If you will complete your ballot. Commissioner Delgado, Mr. Reinhardt. Commissioner May, Catherine Marsh. Mayor Henry, Matthew Reinhardt. Commissioner Henry, Matthew Reinhardt. Commissioner Reed, Mr. Reinhardt. And Commissioner Cantu, Mr. Reinhardt.
Five, two. Okay, motion carries, well, we have to have a motion. Motion to appoint from someone.
Some move to appoint Matthew Reinhardt.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner May. And all those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Move on to item 10E, it's the City Manager's Office Leisure Services Advisory Board Appointments Resolution. A resolution appointing four members to the Leisure Services Advisory Board for terms expiring December 31, 2022, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to present.
This agenda item is to appoint four members to the Leisure Services Advisory Board. We've received applications for Zone 1, 3, 4, and 6. And Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, we will go through the four and have one motion. Amanda Glue over, a Glug over for Zone 1.
I would like to nominate her.
Steven Miller for Zone 3.
I'll nominate Steven Miller.
Carol Killian for Zone 4.
I'll nominate Ms. Killian.
And Renee Richardson for Zone 6. Commissioner Reed.
Yeah, I know. I'm wondering what happened to John Hughes, but I'll nominate Renee Richardson.
Okay. He didn't, he didn't apply? Yeah. Okay, this motion is to appoint the before-mentioned slate. May we have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Take a motion from Commissioner Traeger and a second from Commissioner May. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This motion carries 7-0.
Okay, moving on to 10F, it's the City Manager's Office Peabody Auditorium Advisory Board Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing one member to the Peabody Auditorium Advisory Board for a term expiring December 31, 2025, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to present.
Appointment of one member to the Peabody Auditorium Advisory Board. There's currently an opening in Zone 3, and we have one application from Ms. Sarah Fox. Commissioner May?
I have marked Ms. Sarah Fox. Second.
All right, we have a motion. Motion to appoint, and a second. Take a motion from Commissioner May and a second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
Moving on to item 10G, it's the City Manager's Office Police and Fire Pension Board Appointment Resolution. A resolution appointing one member of the Board of Trustees of the Police and Fire Pension Board Fund for a four-year term ending December 31, 2025, and providing an effective date. Ms. Betty Goodman to present.
Appointment of one member to the Police and Fire Pension Board. We have one opening and one qualifying applicant, and that's Mr. William Cornedick. May we have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Cantu and a second from Commissioner Traeger. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 7-0.
And just for purposes of the minutes, there were no public speakers on the last three items.
No, there were not.
E, F, and G.
Thank you.
And we're going to move back to item 8E, which was pulled from the consent agenda to the administrative items. Item 8E is Utilities Department Florida Department of Environmental Protection Consent Order Bennett Swamp Project, No City Cost Resolution. A resolution authorizing the City Manager to execute a consent order with the state of Florida Department of Environmental Protection, which requires the city to apply for a permit modification related to the city's West Side Regional Water Reclamation Facility and the Bennett Swamp Outfall, and providing an effective date.
Hi, Shannon Ponitz, Utilities Director. So this item, we had a joint project that we constructed with the St. John's River Water Management District and DEP, and the two agencies actually paid for the majority of this project. And it's a beneficial use of the reclaimed water, its reuse quality, highly advanced treatment water that everybody uses on their yards. If you live out west and we have reuse available, that's what you're irrigating your yard with. This is the water that goes into the swamp, and we have a permit with DEP, and the way the permit was written, they tied it to the outfall of the swamp instead of the end of our pipe as to what we're contributing. The way it works is the loading, it's called a total maximum daily load that you can put into a water body, and the Tamoca River is where this eventually goes to, and it has limits on phosphorus and nitrogen. So with the permit, we were only allowed to put in 800 pounds of phosphorus and 15,000 pounds of nitrogen. Once we hit, we started using this project in May of last year, and it was after we had built it, and the granting agency wanted us to start using it. And it was very wet at the time, but we started using it as they asked us to. Once we start putting one drop of water out in the swamp, we have to start monitoring at the locations in our permit, and we have to continue to monitor until nothing is coming out of the swamp. So we started in May, we ended in August because we had hit the limit, so we stopped putting reuse out there. But the swamp kept overflowing because we had over 60 inches of rain, and we have a lot of construction going out there, going on out there, and every, when the contractors are putting in underground utility lines that are, you know, 10, 8 feet deep, when they're building these large retention ponds, they have to de-water the area, and all of that de-watering ends up going into that swamp. So we contributed about 1.5% of the total volume that went to the swamp. And the way it's, you take the concentration and you multiply it by the volume, so it's all based on the volume of the water leaving the swamp. So because it was written in the permit that way, they had to, they had to cite us, and so the enforcement is to give us a consent order to allow us time to apply for a permit modification, to change the location of where our responsibility ends, and we're going to ask for it to be at the end of pipe. And the regulators know that, and they're supportive of it because they do want us to use the project, because the alternative is that it goes directly into the Halifax River. The city produces, based on our influent flow to our two wastewater treatment plants, about 11.5 million gallons per day. We take that water in and we treat it to reuse quality standards, and we distribute it to as many customers that will take it, that we have availability to. But we only distribute approximately 4 million gallons on average a day. That leaves 7.5 million gallons of water, and you got to put it somewhere. So this is a beneficial use of this water, and the agencies believe this, the city is, we are trying to be good stewards of the water, of the resources, and so that's what this item is about. And I, you know, I don't believe it's, I don't know if the, I know that there's some citizens that are opposed to it, and I don't know if it's because they don't understand what the water actually is, that it's actually reuse water that we all use, we irrigate golf courses with it. It is very highly treated water. So if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Does anyone know why there is such citizen concern? This was one of the most exciting projects that we've had in my tenure up here.
Yep.
For me. So does anyone know why? I've tried to address this as it relates to this issue of referring to us as, our city is, you know, a poor water syndrome, as many residents like to refer to this issue of reuse water, which is false. I think we need to do a more thorough job of educating the community, but does anyone want to address this?
Mr. Mayor, I don't know that, part of it probably is, it's not, it's not something they can see and realize the real value of it. It is kind of hidden in the swamp, so, and maybe we need to get some educational information out about the amount of sods removed by this process. It is significant, and that's why the permitting agencies are so, you know, and they really, really like this project. The difference is, we took the volumes of nutrients going into the Halifax and took it out through this process, and that is, that's something nobody's really been able to accomplish around here, but we're doing it. It's one of the first projects that's of this nature that's been done, and I believe in it. I know the Water Management District does, I think it is the way to do a couple of things. You hydrate the wetlands that are, and many times, they need the water, and then you, it vegetates that wetlands, too. It's not just, you're not just dumping water to dump water, and so I think there's many, many benefits to the project, and certainly the Water Management District and DEP both are very much supportive of the project. It actually, the funding of this project, the majority of the funding came from those two agencies.
Right. And I will, I will note that the nutrients, phosphorus and nitrogen, they occur naturally in the swamp. Decaying organic manner, matter has nitrogen and phosphorus. The soil has nitrogen and phosphorus. So, you know, the fact that we could have not put one drop of reuse water out there, and that, those limits would have been exceeded just by what was coming from the other sources. So I really, I believe in the project. I think it's a good project, and I'm hopeful that we're going to be successful in getting our permit modification approved quickly, but there are a bunch of different sections of DEP that look at everything, but they've been in conversations with us, and they're very positive towards it, and they want to work with us.
Okay. All right, and I, any other?
Yeah, do you think we can maybe start getting some, like, educational sessions at some of the community groups?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
I was going to add to that because this really harkens back to the project where we were using the, where we converted water that was sewage water to the quality of tap water, but this idea of our residents thinking that that was the water that they were now drinking is really something that we need to have both of these as a, you know, to educate the community. Because you even have elected officials.
That believe.
Who, that believe this and that go around sort of courting residents with this, these ideas.
Well, as far as what we refer to as our DTS facility out at West Side, that facility is a, it's a 200,000 gallon a day facility, and what it does is it takes the reuse water, the already highly advanced treated wastewater effluent, it's already reuse quality, and it takes it through a series of treatment trains, and when it comes out, it goes right back to the wastewater plant. We don't even put that water in our reuse system. So it is in no way coming in contact with the residents. It's purely a test. It'll be done, the November is the 24 months. We had to stop the process during the pandemic, so we got delayed, and we began it again in November of 2020. So this November, we will be done, and at that point, the city is not obligated to use it at all. It's, it's, it's just a test.
But it doesn't benefit us, does it benefit us to continue to use it, or would it, is it any sort of?
There are no regulations to use it. You could put it out in the reuse system, but 200,000 gallons isn't a whole lot when you think about what we're doing on a daily basis. It's a very small, it's just a test, a testing facility. I mean, we can't, we cannot put it in the drinking water. There are no regulations to support that, and that, that's going to have to happen with the regulators. I mean, no, the city can't do it, nobody in the state can do it. I can tell you that there's other cities in other areas of the state that don't have the water supply that we have that wish they could do it, because they're, they're running up against the wall, and they don't have water, a good water source, so.
Well, we need to also educate the residents as it relates to the water source and the fact that we are not in jeopardy of encroaching upon that in a way that would reduce our quality or capacity, because that's another issue that continues to be something that I hear on talk radio, where they're just wailing and lamenting about something that's completely false.
Yeah, we do have, our aquifer is very strong. I will tell you that over the years, St. John's, all of the regulators want to preserve the aquifer, and so they, the reason they want us to do these alternative water supply projects, such as Bennett Swamp, is to rehydrate the aquifer so that we don't run out of water. And so that, you know, we're trying to do what, what the St. John's and the DEP are asking us to do, and that project was a great project because it didn't cost us a lot. You know, the only way to get rid of the water is to either store it, but you can't build enough storage to get rid of 7.5 million gallons a day, because you're going to get it again the next day if you store, you know? So, so you have storage, or you can distribute it, but you can't force people to take it if it's raining, or if they don't want it, or if it's not available. The other way is to go into established neighborhoods that don't have reuse, and it's extremely expensive to do that, and the cost benefit doesn't really pan out, because it's best to do it in the newer areas where you can build it in the system, you know, in the subdivisions as they get built. So there's, you know, we're doing everything we can to be responsible with the water.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, and I am happy to have heard that that project will end in November.
Yes.
So we can begin to say that it's a project that we won't even essentially be participating in.
That's correct.
Any longer.
We'll provide a final report to the agencies, and then it will be done.
Okay.
I do have a public speaker for this item, Ms. Ann Ruby.
Thank you, Shannon.
Hi, Ann Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. Whether it ends in November or not, the education portion is critical. There should be a great presentation with a tour at the water treatment plant. It could be offered once a month on a rotating schedule, and there should be a traveling presentation that goes to neighborhood groups, church groups, community groups. It just makes no sense to leave people ignorant about this and then be upset because they're calling it names. You should put it in the schools. It's something that's going to come up in the future. So an education program is critical, whether the program ends in November or not, and I have to say. And I have to say that when I took Citizens Academy, the tour of the water plant was the highlight. So I really think having an educational program out at the water plant, having people see it, would make this far less terrifying. So thank you.
Thank you.
And that was my only speaker on this.
Let me ask a question. What is, what is the, the holdback from exposing people to seeing that? There isn't that?
There isn't any. We're happy to do tours. Oh, I mean, I, we have no problem doing tours of any of our plants. We like showing people what we're doing and, and, you know, because I, I recognize that when people see our projects, they are large numbers. And, but they're large facilities, and they're, they're critical facilities. So we're all about education, and I'd love to give tours to anybody who wants to go.
Well, I recommend that we, it doesn't have to be once a month, but if we did it a couple of times, and we reached out to every community, neighborhood group, and invited them to come and see that plant, particularly the one that they like to refer to as the poopy water plant. And, well, because it was, it was just, many people were doing it and they knew it. You know, it was really fake news. They, they did it in an effort to try to injure people who were on the ballot. And so, you know, I didn't dig into it at the time, but I think that we need to, you have to combat that level of community ignorance and the intentional efforts of some in our community to try to cast our city in a negative light. So I would recommend that you all develop a plan to, to do just that and reach out to, it doesn't have to be into perpetuity. You can plan it over the next six months or a year. And that way, we can educate folks, and then we'll, we may never be done with it, but we're not, we won't be using it anymore. But the reality is, what Ann said is true. If other communities are truly considering and wish that they could use this, you want to be able to say that that's a reality for some communities, but it's not for us at this time.
Okay.
So, okay. All right.
So I don't have a motion yet on the floor for this item?
All right. Do we have, can we have a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion from Commissioner Reed. Do we have a second? A motion, Commissioner Reed, second, Commissioner Traeger. No further speakers. All those in favor, let it be noted by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, seven zero.
And that was our final item on the agenda.
All right. We'll move to commission comments. We'll start with Commissioner Henry.
I know this is something that I brought up a while back, but I want to revisit it. And that is coming up with a way that we can partner with nonprofits who provide mentorship programs in underserved communities. I know it's something that the city cannot take on and do themselves, but I do believe that there is a way we can partner with nonprofits to provide those gaps that are missing in those underserved communities. I, I believe right now that, that our community does pretty well with our youth, but looking around in the state of, state of many communities, state of many states, I, I think it's just important that we maintain a hold on our, on our youth. And, and I think we can do that through mentorship. And I think that there are ways that the city, won't cost the city money, but maybe some facilities or, or those types of ways that we can partner with different. And we have reputable organizations out there that will partner with us to provide some level of mentorship for our youth. So that is something that I definitely would like to see staff bring back, see what we can do, what steps we would need to take, what would an organization need to do to apply to partner with the city of Daytona Beach. So those are some things that I'd like to see in the next coming weeks. Glad to see the vaccine site at YSG. That was fast. Talked about it last meeting, and then within a week, there was a site.
When you have kids, you don't, you don't know when they're gonna call you.
My kids.
Sure. They don't call you, mother.
So happy, really happy to see that. Would love some information on how many people were served and, and.
There was actually 58. It was a kind of low turnout, that one. Drew, you want to come up and?
Do we have enough time to get the information out there? Because I know we just talked about it the last meeting, and then within a week, sometimes in communities like that, it takes a minute to get the information spread.
Drew Droos, school deputy city manager and fire chief. Yes, the turnout was low. We did multiple, multiple avenues of social media. I know the mayor posted it, I believe, and you posted it. Cynthia Slater with the NAACP posted it, in addition to the city and all city accounts. It was also released to the News Journal, and they did put it in an article. And I'm, I don't believe it made our radio talk show because the radio talk show was today. But this is, further speaks to an effort that the mayor actually turned me on to. Right now, there's a coalition of area partners ranging from Department of Health, ECU, several other community stakeholders that are trying to join together to create a health literacy program. We were pursuing a grant. Unfortunately, the timeline was too narrow to accomplish that. But the task itself still needs to be accomplished. And the mayor spoke to it. He's even received donation to instill not only the educational piece, but an actual physical outreach piece to instill vaccine confidence. So I do agree, it was sad to see that so few people took advantage of it. We know that confidence has been shaken with the Johnson &amp; Johnson shot, which the FDA and the CDC currently are reviewing. Hopefully, they'll have a decision Friday. The Europeans' version of the FDA, they just re-released it with new warning guidance about the, the occurrence of blood clots. So marketing is very critical. But from this consortium group, it was, traditional marketing isn't getting us there. So we need to find out, they're not listening to local radio station, they're listening to local blogs. We're trying to get with the, the student government associations from the area colleges and seeing if they, the youth, hearing from them, how does our youth receive information unlike what we're used to receiving? So it's an educational piece for everyone of how to engage a specific demographic of the community, but we need to do better.
Okay. Well, thank you. Just the same, I was happy to see it. And hopefully, we'll come up with some innovative ideas to boost the confidence of the people so that we can get through this, this tough time. Because people need to get vaccinated.
Well, Commissioner Henry, on the brighter side, I have a competition going on with a commissioner, commissioner in Daytona. We have it.
Thank you so much.
If I could include real quick, the consortium of the Volusia County PIOs, the Communication Division, they're also working on enhancing the current mask up, backup, wash up, and including vax up, and utilizing those dollars and that avenue to help spread the word for vaccine confidence.
Okay. I'm sorry, I have a question. I missed something. How, what is your key marketing strategy on this program?
So that's what we're talking about, is those traditional methods of print media, radio media, and social media are not making the impact. So this group was trying to look at an avenue of direct contact, engagement of the local youth and the local community, where they're at, instead of them trying to seek out our information.
And then, do you have any demographics on where we're lacking right now in Daytona Beach? I noticed these numbers are for Volusia County in Florida, but do we have a stat for just Daytona Beach so far?
They do not provide numbers based on city or census track.
So no demographics at all in terms of where we're missing it?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
On, on part of this consortium is the Department of Health's epidemiologist that keeps track of all the data. So they're trying to see what, how we could get inputs, at least from the point of distribution, and maybe showing a reduced, a reduced point of distribution number, such as the 58 we had at YSG. That could signal that either the area has been oversaturated, though we don't believe that to be true, or that there is still a demand. I think it really comes down to the marketing piece, because I believe that, that community has not been oversaturated, because we haven't done any events there. I think we just need to keep trying better.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Which brings me to my next thing, and I hope that we can do a little better here. People are gonna be getting back into the job market soon because COVID funds won't last forever. Unemployment won't last forever. So city manager and I, you had talked about perhaps a job fair over at YSG. So just want to remind you of that and see what kind of timeline we can get on. I don't think right now, but maybe in the next month as, as people start getting back to the workforce. I would definitely still like to see a job fair coming to YSG. And also, one last question. Do, do we still offer the one-time reprieve on catastrophic water events at, at our homes?
Yes.
Okay. Because I had a resident call, and she was told that they don't offer that. I, I told her to call up, and they, and she was told that they don't offer it, that she just had to pay it. So I just wanted to double check that we're still offering it.
We do have a program, and if you'd ask her to call our office, then we'd, we'd put her in the right place.
Okay. All right. And that's all my comments for tonight.
And I, I think one of the types of programs you're referring to as it relates to a partnership with the community for mentoring type programs is like the Boys and Girls Club, who uses the Dickerson Center. And that's kind of the types of partnerships you're referring to.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Reed?
As well as, don't forget, Mr. Mayor, the Divine Nine partnered with you on your reading program. We took turns every Thursday to go and read to the children.
Uh huh. Awesome.
Mr. Manager, I was, it was told to me tonight that we need some speed bumps on Loomis. And this is Loomis from MLK to Lockhart because of the Housing Authority program there for the children, you know, the little room that they converted with the computers and everything, that they're just concerned that some of the kids might get hit. People are using that stretch to speed, because there's nothing there, just Loomis to MLK. You know what I'm talking about? By the Hayes House? All right.
I do know. You said the Hayes House.
Mm-hmm. You know what I'm talking about now? Uh huh. I had a great time Friday night. Chief still here? Okay. Yeah, you know, it's amazing what our police officers do and, and how they put their lives on the line every day, just to hear some of the stories that they were being recognized for, things that, that we didn't hear, because they're just doing what they do every day, from shootings and saving lives and what have you. And it was just an honor to be there on Friday night in, to support. I was, we was, we stayed, we stayed pretty much dry. We're under our little tent out on home base. But I, I really enjoyed that. And, and you know, it's just been a while since I've gone to one of those, but to hear what they're doing is just phenomenal. And I just commend the chief and his staff, his entire staff, on what they do for us and how they keep us safe. I want to thank Mr. Man, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank the manager for the sidewalk on Mailey. We had a concern, the sidewalks were cracking, and there was a lady, an elderly lady in a wheelchair, who they were not able to support, just taking her outside. And they were concerned about her falling out of the wheelchair, and her son called from out of state. He comes home every other weekend to check on his mother. And I was at an affair last evening, and some, the caregiver came up to me and thanked me for the sidewalk. She says, now I can take her outside. So once we found out what part of Mailey we were going to, I was, I said, no.
The staff really did a good job. They followed up and went and checked the entire sidewalk.
Yes, yes. So thank you for that. And it was expedited, I think we just talked about in the last month, and it was done. So I thank you for that.
They're on the ball.
Yeah.
Good leadership there.
Okay. And then lastly, I just want to tell you all that I, I completed my ethics training for the year today. I went to Daytona for the four-hour class. And I really enjoyed the speaking. You know, sometimes when we go to Florida League of Cities, when that's the first thing you do at the conference, eight o'clock in the morning, you're like this. And the people are normally not as engaged, but this gentleman was cracking jokes, you know, he had videos embedded in his presentation. So it was very lively, and I really enjoyed it today. I really did. It was worth the drive to Daytona. That concludes my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Traeger?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Reed. We had a great time at the Jack with the police awards, and like she said, it's stupendous the work they're doing. And even though it rained, and it did rain, everybody seemed to be having a wonderful time. So I was very glad Commissioner Cantu and Commissioner Reed and I were there. And it was a fun time. And Commissioner. That's right. Commissioner Cantu and I went to the convention gala of the Purple Hearts, and they were really pleased with the convention here in Daytona Beach. And they would like to bring them back next year. So we, we hope to see them again. And they gave us a couple of plaques, one for Volusia County and one for Daytona Beach. And good people. And I'm delighted to see we're gonna have a parade on the Fourth of July. Fantastic. It was so good that we might be able to celebrate it this year, after last year. Anyhow, that's all I have to say.
All right. Commissioner Delgado?
Nothing for me tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Commissioner.
I appreciated the observations on Seabreeze Boulevard with regard to some of the issues we saw, and I'm just wondering, how do we go about addressing some of the concerns that were highlighted on the handout? And I really appreciated the effort here. So how do we move forward to address it?
Go over that and go over the community. So I'll talk about it.
Okay.
This came from me.
All right.
Action, this, this came from me, and I'll talk about it, because I do want to show it and just talk about it.
Okay. Then what is the progress on Lennox Avenue on Peninsula, off Peninsula? There was a speeding issue happening down there. There was some traffic issues going. I brought it up at the last meeting also. Any movement yet on that? Any thoughts? I have a resident who's staying, and we're staying in touch, and we just keep touching base on the progress on it.
Who is that?
Lennox.
Lennox?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Thank you for asking. Andy Holmes, Public Works. We did install one set of speed bumps on Lennox, and we are gonna do a follow-up. We talked to the resident afterwards. We're doing a follow-up of the speed study to see what the effect was. It may be a situ, I, I think it's cut down a lot on the cut-through traffic, which is a problem there on that street that cuts through from A1A down to Peninsula. But we are gonna do a follow-up on the speed study and collect that data, and then we'll know exactly what we're dealing with.
I appreciate that so much. And the other thing was, when you look at the corner of Grand View and ISB, you're going to notice that there is a chunk of sidewalk that's been filled in with asphalt directly on the corner. And I'm wondering if, I'm happy to go by and take a picture of it, but I'm wondering if we could address it. It, it's odd. It's just extremely odd.
Get right out there and take a look.
Thank you so much. Thank you, I appreciate that. And so given all of that, I appreciate, thank you, sir. I appreciate the fact that we're doing work on MLK, we've done work on Orange Avenue, we've done work in Zone Four, we've done work in Zone Six. My question is, is there any way, and we discussed this earlier, that we could get any kind of road improvement and/or work on Beachside?
Yes. We have a program in our budget, over $4 million for road and sidewalk improvements in the city. And we'll bring, bring back to you a listing of all the proposed projects and where they're located. And I don't have it right now, but as soon as I have it, I'll make it available to everybody.
And, and let's not forget that we, we have put forth, what was it, $750,000 towards ISB. And this is not our, the project on the other side of Seabreeze, the bridge there. So.
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand there.
I guess the thought was, since I'm hearing from residents, the thought is more the local side streets, some of those sidewalks as well, not just the major projects, which I admit are great attractors for business, but then also the residential areas. For example, the corner of ISB and Grand View, something along those lines. And that's it. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Okay. I just had a couple of things. I know the speed humps were approved in Bayberry. I just want to see if we could get a timeframe. I had a couple of calls, and...
Again, thanks for asking. Andy Holmes, Public Works. Bayberry, we had scheduled for last week to install, and we couldn't get asphalt from the plant. And so, it won't be longer than another week or two.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll get it done.
Okay. And Captain Scott, Pelican Bay, South Course, the bridges. Could get an update?
Well, the south, you're talking about the South Course of Pelican Bay, so 550 C-Duck. You know, there was a code case on that last year. We went through the process with that code case, and a fine was established on that property and has since maxed out at $15,000. We've been communicating with the legal department as well as the building department to figure out what else can be addressed and what else can be done. You know, as far as the code action, we also went out and revisited the property to see if the conditions had drastically changed from what we previously cited, and if there was anything that maybe we just overlooked that didn't get cited, see if we could re-site at this time. The condition's really the same as it was before when we cited it the last time. There really wasn't anything else we cited this time.
Okay.
What was the address for that?
550 C-Duck. Is there any other question?
And Mr. Jagger, so you said there's not much more we can do in the legal stance?
Well, we have a $15,000 lien against the property. So, if the property were to sell...
I thought that was 20.
Captain Lee just said it was 15.
I believe it's 15, but I go back and check for it.
I thought it was 20. Yeah, okay.
So, you do have that lien in place on the property. If it sells, they'll have to pay that off. Beyond that, you know, if we were to re-site them, that could be done, but at this point, I'm not sure that would accomplish much. There is a substantial mortgage ahead of us on this property, so foreclosure is probably not an option. If the property owner happens to own other property, which I'm not actually aware of, we could foreclose on that property as well. But honestly, at this point, with foreclosure not being an option, giving the mortgage, the existing mortgage, which we've foreclosed subject to, all we can really do is rack up fines at this point, unless and until the condition of the property becomes a danger, in which case we can step in and condemn the property.
Wouldn't plywood flying off the bridges be a danger?
That would be a determination for the building official, and he has been made aware of the condition out there, and I believe they conducted inspections this week.
That is correct.
Okay.
And it is 20,000. I apologize. I mixed it up with a different project.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. And the last thing I have is Commissioner Trager went to the military of the Purple Heart. We had a great time. We had chapters from all over the state, and actually, we were both given an award for the, well, the city was given an award for hosting the event, and actually, for the first time it ever being in Volusia County. So, that's why the other one says Volusia County. And that's all I have.
Great. Awesome. Awesome. Great. I have some observations, and staff is doing a great job in this. Do you have the, okay, thank you. And I won't do this each time that staff works on something, but I just wanted you all, it's a two-sided street, you know, many of the improvements that need to take place in the city. And to be honest with you, I didn't know that staff had already started working on all these things. But my thought was, I just want us to, part of what we're doing on that mayor's action group is looking at our city, and we want to begin to see what we look like and then see what we can address. But we don't all, all of it is not on the city, you know, and that's a part of what this is about. And some of it, the city has already started to address. So, what do I do? Just click, just like that? Okay. Thank you. The first observation that you all see is that we have those signs that have been there for quite a while, the ones that Commissioner Delgado is, and I think the manager is already looking at some of the things that Commissioner Delgado wanted. But as it relates to the ones that are still there, they can be repainted, refurbished, or removed. I think they, yeah, you're going to take them down? Yeah, yeah, okay. That sounds good to me. The streetlights style one and two, my question was, what would FDOT install? Because there's some work that's going to be done. The replacement fixture, this fixture to the right, they're saying is not available anymore. So, does that mean that the fixture to the left is the one that they will implement?
No, but we're not going to, we're going to change all these fixtures and be consistent all the way through.
Microphone.
That area.
Okay. And that was a part of what?
The city system.
It's a city system. Okay. So, we'll just go and be consistent.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I realize that these are private property. Well, let me stay there, just so folks know, we're going to be consistent. That's what we want to do throughout the city. A lot of our branding, and we want to have things consistent in each area so that we begin to develop a congruent look. You know you're in one place, and everything looks uniform. This, now, I realize this is private property, but let me ask you, is that, is that a code violation?
The tar, the canopy, I don't, it's, go ahead. You tell us.
Yeah, there is a code violation visible there. We've since looked at it, and there's a case open for it. Go address it.
Okay. And I'm not trying to embarrass anyone in the community or anything like that. A lot of this normally would be done behind closed doors. I just give them a list, talk about it, and work through it. But I want you to know, these are some of the sorts of things and ways that we're trying to work through things. And some of it is much more, and I'll bring that before the commission that would, in order for us to, because we've got to turn this into the crown jewel that it should be, you know, the B-side in general. Is this one a code violation? This is also private property.
Yes, sir. We went out and looked at this one as well, and we found some violations that we could address. Those have been cited, or they're in the process of...
I thought it was less of an issue, but it is an issue. We've addressed, this is the same issue as it relates to the kiosk, but the staff is ordering landscaping here. I'm going to go ahead and throw out an issue that I'm going to bring before us at some point in time for us to discuss. We've got planners throughout the city, and one of the issues that I met with some folks, we've got planners on, say, Main Street. There's a possibility that we should come back and talk about how do we decorate those planners, maybe do some sort of competition with schools to decorate each one, to paint them. But I'm going to come back and revisit that, but we have to begin to figure out how we can beautify things that will hold their value. And so, I don't want us to necessarily rush to do things. Let's, just because we bring it before us, this is, we ought to be in these things for the long haul. Let's figure out how we can do things that's going to, we don't want to put something there that next week's not going to work, that our college kids or the people who are down there are going to pull up, you know? So, let's take our time as we think, as we grow through these things. And I know other folks, you know, may want to say, you know, we've got to fix that, but let's make sure we get things right. Now, this one, is this, this is private property also? Do we have some sort of standard by which we expect a business to have their furniture, or is that something that's not?
From a maintenance code standpoint, it's not typically something that we would be able to address. I haven't been able to identify any part of the International Property Maintenance Code or LDC that would directly address the disorder within inside their store.
Yeah. Okay.
We are looking at it to see if there's anything else that can be addressed there.
Okay.
That is not one we've opened a case on.
Okay.
For that purpose.
And of course, the pole that FDOT staff cleaned the stickers off already, and the other sign is private property.
And that sign's being addressed as well.
But it's being addressed.
What's wrong with the sign?
It's the fading of the lettering. It's something that's replaceable. They'll be able to fix it rather quickly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
They're pretty responsive as well. I'm sure they will.
Half dirty sidewalk, Wells Fargo, is that on us or is that on them? Is that their property or who's?
When we looked at it, it looks like it would be their property. I haven't yet had a conversation with Public Works yet to see if it's something that we would clean normally, but it appears to be their property, and so they just stopped it at a certain line in the parking lot. They probably believe it to be our property. We'll engage in that conversation. We already have a contact with that bank. We're working on some other issues related to the parking lot and cameras in that area as well.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, did you go across the street to the food district where the floor is like actually like sticky? There's actually, I think small animals could be trapped there if they're not careful.
Yeah, you're right.
You're referring to in the 500 block?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's like a tar pit.
That's an area where we commonly have to address.
That whole side, we've done it, we, what was it, four months ago?
Yeah.
It's like an Exxon Valdez spill out there. I mean, it's bad.
So, and then just redo it again? It just gets grimy again?
Yeah. It's like, what in the world is it like inside if that's what they're bringing outside? I mean, that's what...
And we can't hold them accountable because it's our sidewalk?
It's our sidewalk. We've got to keep it clean, and we're going to, we're going to try something new. We'll probably, is it weekly? We talk about weekly now?
But let me ask you this. If they're eating on, is, do they have benches like this on our sidewalk? Because I, my feeling is, and I don't want to be in the weeds of things, but why wouldn't they be, have to be responsible for that if they want to have that?
In the 500 block, there's an area that's fenced that they would be responsible for cleaning. Beyond the fenced area, that becomes the, like the sidewalk. It's our responsibility to address those areas.
Okay. Did you have something, Andy? Okay. All right.
He will come back with a program of showing what we're planning to do with this stuff, okay?
Okay.
But it's not only here. I mean, that's the other part, you know? It's not only here. This is one area you've looked at, and we've looked at, but there are other places we need to do things to.
Absolutely. Absolutely. But I'm just being honest, my focus right now is Beachside in several areas, and it's going to move. And, you know, I asked you guys to look at the lights. That's not an issue that we can address because it's inside, and you guys already fixed this. What was this? What is, this is a, this is our light pole?
I believe that's a streetlight pole.
A streetlight pole? Okay.
Address it.
Yeah, but it's ours to...
Yeah, that's a, that's a light pole base, and there is a plan to joint there in the base so they can put it on after the pole is set, and it just came apart. So, we fixed it already. It didn't take long.
All right. And this, we're ordering a replacement box?
Yes. That utility box, we're not sure who owns it yet, but if it's ours, we're going to replace it, and if it isn't, we're going to compel whoever owns it to replace it with a box that's in good repair.
Okay. And here's another street awning.
Yeah, the wood boarding here has been since removed. The frontage is in working condition. The awning and stuff is being addressed through a code case.
Okay. Great. And that was private property.
And Mr. Mayor, that might be something that we could do as low-hanging fruit, is just make available low-interest loans or some sort of subsidy or something to give some of these places a little, you know, facade and fixer-upper. I don't know, I mean, how much it would cost to, you know, if it's a financial issue for some of these properties where they can't afford, or they're choosing not to put some money into their awnings or something like that. I mean, that, I feel like that would be relatively inexpensive, and I don't know if there's any, we're not, obviously, we're not in a CRA or anything like that, but is there any way to make available, you know, you pay 50%, we'll pay 50% or any kind of thing like that, where we could kind of do a refreshing or, you know, get everybody up to have the same color awnings or the same look and feel or anything like that? Because I think that would make a huge difference on the street if, just looking down the street, there was a uniform look and feel, you know? I'm trying to do some stuff in Port Orange, and they, I mean, they are on you about the color of, I mean, it's, they are very draconian about how everything looks. I feel like maybe they're more strict than we are. I don't know. I'm not really making that comparison. But I do know that, you know, something like this, you know, shouldn't be, shouldn't be a hard thing for us to get accomplished. Like I said, I don't know if there's, if there's any options for us to help out with people who are, you know, struggling to do that.
There is, particularly in CRAs, it's easier to do. Seabreeze is not in CRA. So, we would have to look at bringing some funds out of general funds, and it's just a matter of us appropriating that amount for that purpose.
Have we done stuff like that before?
We have, with the CRA, we have, but we haven't done it outside of CRA.
Are we open to it?
Pardon?
How would we get that going? Is that a commission vote to decide that we want to have extra funds put aside for it, or is that, how does that work?
We could bring back a program with some recommendations. That would be probably the right thing to do.
And then my, that he lived in the wrong, that he lived in a CRA, but Matt Rominek, my business partner, said at one point, there was something where if he painted his house, there was a matching thing from the city or something. He may live in a, in a district or something. But yeah, if we could look at doing something like that to help incentivize that, I think that'd make a huge difference.
I think it's a great idea. You know, not just talking about it, not just fixing the street racks.
I'm sorry, can, the microphone, I'm getting, they can't hear you out in the lobby.
We've got a mobile one. The one you wear on your neck.
As I ride over high.
And I don't want to, now, one thing I do want us to remember is that everyone has to put something in, because we have some responsibilities that we are going to be responsible for, that we are going to have to want to pay for when we think about things like lighting and things of that nature. So, if we're going to, the business district is going to, we're going to ask them to do what they can do. That can be done on their end, from my perspective. But by the same token, if you look at it and you say, we want to go to the next level, which is what I think you're saying, and you want all of that to be uniform, then that's another level. And then that's something that we would have to, that, huh?
That's a code.
And it's a code thing, which we currently don't have, which I believe that, you know, we're, it's time to go to another level. So, we need to have, we need to consider our standards and the standards that we have for things and not be so lax in some of the things that we do. Okay. And I think that's it. It's all of them. But thank you, and thank you all for indulging me on this. Okay, and I think that's it. It's all of them. But thank you and thank you all for indulging me on this. I'll try not to do this very often, but I will do it from time to time. Last thing is that city also had on A1A 15 traffic lights or street lights that were out. And they're fixed. And so I want to say thank you for getting that done so expediently. How many, who had a chance, has had a chance to ride Main Street and look at Main Street and? One person, Commissioner?
Actually, no. I'm on that street often and I recall just three weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago, the city manager and I mentioned it before, met with the merchants down there wherein the city manager offered to improve the lighting with regard to having them wrapped, but definitely improving the lighting beyond just wrapping trees, right? But I thought there was a commitment and that it was a work in progress. It's just a matter of when.
We are working on the cost of doing that.
It is a commitment, but it is a cost that probably will exceed from my perspective because I think it may require new lights fixtures. So it's more than, it's something that would have to come before the commission if I'm correct.
Yeah, I think because it's gonna get into relaying lines to provide electricity, that's gonna be costly. But we'll come back to you with all those things.
So as it relates to lighting, Mr. Chisholm? As it relates to lighting, did F.D.O.T. not or did the FPL not come in and redo the lighting and we're redoing it again? Are we adding extra lighting?
They did part of the city. They were supposed to come back and do the rest of the city.
They did Main Street though, right?
They?
Did Main Street.
I don't know if they did Main Street.
They did Main Street, yes.
I know they've done certain areas of the city, but there are also areas that haven't been done.
Okay, but specifically, they did Main Street. That took a year, but they did get it done. So I guess my question is, we're going to do that and then add to it as well. Is that what we're looking at?
I'm gonna, yes. The whole idea is to create a safe place.
Okay.
And you can't do it if you don't have light.
Okay, and then also, you mentioned the planters. It's an interesting thing. I met with some people there and I've been sending pictures to Mr. Chisholm for a while now, right? Different planters of different cities where someone sort of paints them. We even had a merchant offer to paint them herself and they'd be very decorative. So Mr. Chisholm has a number of examples already on hand that I've submitted over a period of roughly a year. So maybe you could take a look at those.
And, well, I'm familiar with those also because I think we spoke to the same person probably. But, and as it relates to the lights, which is something we've been talking about for quite a while and I'm glad to know that you guys went down and met with merchants.
I'm gonna have them film the lights down Beach Street and then go to Main Street and go to Seabreeze. So you can see what the difference is in those particular areas and things that I think it's be evident. I think the picture will show you just about everything about the benefits of doing it.
Yeah, okay.
It may be costly, but I think in the long run, it still could be money well spent.
And that's the reason I asked that everyone have a chance to look at it. So we would know as a commission what we are signing up for and what we value. And I am trying to be very transparent and upfront with things that I'm, you know, kind of promoting because it's, we're a city. And every part of our city has to grow and evolve and we all have to, you know, be married to every component of the community. And so I look forward to, you know, that coming to fruition in due time. And I think that, my last thing is on, Friday night was fabulous. It was a great evening. And I want to say to Daytona Beach, we have some amazing first responders. We have some amazing people throughout the city who are working hard to respond to the challenges of just being a great city. And I'm very proud of so many people who work for the city of Daytona Beach. And I just think that our greatest days are yet ahead and we're moving forward. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was very moved by the whole process Friday night with the police department and I have, since I was first hired here, a couple of years after, about the time we got Mike Chipwood in, we changed the whole format of these awards programs and they did, they had them prior to those days, but they never, it was never really out in the open so much as it is now. And I think the, all the chiefs have really strived to be able to reward those employees that have been outstanding and really heroic in many cases, saving lives and in some cases being shot at. And you just don't, when they tell the story behind each recognition piece that's given out, it is absolutely amazing. You would be very thankful for the people that work for this city if you knew everything that was going on because they do a fantastic job. And it takes a solid family at home behind them and it takes a solid group of elected officials supporting that department. And we have always supported our police department and very proud of that, that whole effort on the part. And I'm proud of the men and women of the police department as the work they do for this city. I have a couple of other things that I just wanted to, you know, this is, I'm getting to be a short timer and I'm anxiously looking at the next phase of my life when I get on the other side of this bench and come back and talk to you maybe. But at some point, it won't be as a manager. It'll be as, you know, a company that I'm putting together. So at some point, I'll share all those ideas with each of you. But it's been a pleasure for me for almost 17 years to be the manager for the city and to work with all the elected officials over those years. And each group, and it is a group, and I say that in that each group of elected officials is in each team that works to make sure the city moves forward in a progressive manner and supports. And all of us, including each of you, get credit for everything that we do because it is truly something done as a group in the end. Because each of us are gonna have a time, I'm gonna have a good time explaining to you those projects and you're gonna have a great time being a part of seeing it actually happen. And in the end, go back to gee whiz, look at it. It's something we did as a group and it wasn't something the manager did or the department did. But it was a collection of a team up here that made those decisions that allowed us to do them. The team that I have behind us out there that actually performs the work each day and it takes all of that for it to work. None of us, including myself or the manager who comes after me, will be the one that has the sole vision, the sole idea to be successful in the city. And that's one thing that I love about working with you as commissioners and others that I've had over the years is everybody's got a different idea and it's a different perspective. And it may not be something I agree with or it may, which doesn't matter. It's, in the end, you value that idea and is it something that works for our community? And is it benefiting the city and is it making it a better place for all of us to live? And that's kind of the values I use in looking at things. And I'm pretty conservative in many ways. Believe it or not, we don't just pass out checks to developers. It's a long process. It's well thought out and the end product because of not only the vision and the leadership we provide out of my office, it's the attorneys and it's the finance people, it's the public works and the utility people. All these folks make things work and we can only succeed if we all work together on projects. It doesn't have to be my project. It doesn't have to be the mayor's project or the clerk's project. It's our project. And it takes everybody, we show our differences. We show the support we have for things that are good for this city, not because it's my project or it's because it's your project, it's because it's our project. That's what makes it work. And I commend all of you for being a part of that effort over the year, the two years that some of you have been here and the four or five others. And certainly with all the mayors and commissions I've worked with over the 16 years, we wouldn't be here today enjoying the fruits of all that investment if it weren't for those people. And they became a team in the end and you are a team too. And that's what, that's what's gonna make us succeed in the future. And I think the new manager, from my meetings with him, I'm very excited about the fact that I think he's gonna have, bring a new, a new vision, a new piece of enthusiasm that is kind of worn out with the old guy here. But he's gonna bring some new ideas too and I think it'll be good for both the staff and it'll be great for the city. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I want to echo the fact that he says that he's conservative because, you know, and I'll say some of these things a little bit later, but I'll just say it now. A lot of people assume that he's just easy on folks who are a part of the investment community. But I can attest to the fact that they do not share that sentiment. And I can 100% attest to that fact, that they don't share that sentiment and that. The biggest concern that I have had as a mayor and with his departure is that, and this is not in reference to our new manager, who the manager was, was I was, I'm always afraid, I don't want a bad deal. And I've always known that we don't, we don't really get, we don't get bad deals really with our manager. Just doesn't happen no matter what the public may say or express as it relates to these deals. They are, they're really good. And when the person tends to take the deal, it's not as easy as people think. And for example, the project across the street, you know, many people want to express that you're giving away, giving away. That project is not a certain project. And the reason that it's not a certain project is because the deal is cut close. If you just give away things, then you know things are 100% gonna happen. But when it's close, and he cuts them as close as he can to the benefit of this city. And so to that, I have appreciated that among many other things. And I'll close by saying that I appreciate his sentiments about us being a team and that alludes to what I was saying earlier. As a city, we're a team and every project is to make us great. And one of the reasons that I'm constantly bringing things and thoughts and ideas before you is because at the end of the day, they have to execute the vision that we give. And we mentioned tonight wanting new road projects. Well, we need to plan that as a team. And we do, you know, he's got $4 million. We gotta look at what, you know, is that really enough? Can we do more? Because it's the most important thing, one of the most important things going forward is the fact that we want to see our roads and be able to replenish and repair sidewalks to buttress those older neighborhoods. So I'll end with that, but I appreciate working with you all and I appreciate us evolving into a stronger and better and even greater team than we are now. But we, the fact of the matter is that we're all Team Daytona. Mr. Jagger, did you have anything?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay, then that will conclude this meeting. We will adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, it does have to be on the record, but I'm going to be out of town Thursday and Friday this week.
Okay.
Staff will be here as normal.
Okay, all right.
We were talking about roads.
And start with our public comment forum. Our first speaker is George St. Pierre and on deck is Robin McLaren.
Well, nothing like being first. My name's George St. Pierre. I'm the owner of Jungle Georges located at 1022 Main Street. I'm before you today because the scooter problem has not gotten any better. I've been on the phone with both Captain Lee and Captain Loomis. The ordinance that has been written is not enough to cover them. You've kind of got their hands tied on what they can do. This company came into us and you have given them every break whatsoever. You've told them you extend it. They didn't bother doing a darn thing. Then you turned around and said you can't do it and they're still doing it in our city. They're operating illegally without a license. They are setting these scooters not only on the sidewalk, but they're dropping them off on personal business property, which our officers don't have the authority to go over there and take the scooters. The people that are riding them down the sidewalk, and if they want to play chicken on A1A with their lives, that's fine. But I get hit weekly. My employees get hit over and over again. Nothing has gotten any better. I've got scars on my shins. I'm being hit constantly on Main Street in between Ocean Avenue and the beach. And I know if I'm getting hit and my employees are getting hit walking to work on the sidewalk, then our, not only our elderly, our tourists, everybody in the community is getting hit. I'm before you to ask you to revisit this in a way that makes the company that is actually operating this thing to actually pay. Because writing a ticket to a tourist does nothing or no good because as soon as they leave, another tourist picks up that thing and does the exact same thing. There is no written rules whatsoever on these scooters. They're not even supposed to be here. You've already told them they can't be in the city. And now they're kind of laughing at y'all and saying, we're gonna do it anyways. If they were doing it and I was in charge, I would find a way to make this company pay whatsoever. You can talk with Lee. I've talked with him on the phone. Come up with some sort of solution. The businesses that have these, and I mean Salty Dogs has a big giant sign out in front of their building that says, "Reserve your scooters." The place on A1A XXX has these scooters lined up. The place on Main Street, every night, they're dropped over and they're dropped all over our city. Please help them.
Can you hear me? Okay, that's better. He's absolutely right. I'm on A1 quite often lately, almost every day. And sometimes later in the nighttime, especially in the nighttime, they're really bad at nighttime. And they literally use the road like that's their personal road and you have to follow behind them and then they squirt across you and they squirt across the other way. And they're young kids, so they're not following the age limit. Sometimes I see two and three year olds riding with the older kids. And I'm always nervous that I'm gonna hit one of them or get into an accident with one of them and they're flying on, flying down the sidewalks. And I've taken a second look at these scooters and I was an advocate for them before, but I do believe we have to revisit it and do something. And that's just my take as far as going down and seeing it for myself.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, George. I don't know what else we can do. What else is there to?
Well, they're not following the rules. They're not where they're supposed to be. They're nowhere near where they're supposed to be. They're right in the main parts, which is where we just decided that they weren't going to be. And that's where they are. I'm glad he brought it up because I meant to bring it up.
Well, I don't, I don't have the patience to keep addressing things that are not good for the community. I want people to be able to be in business, but if you can't do things, then what option do we have other than what we've done? Do you have, yes, I'm asking you.
Yes, well, your current regulations prohibit people under the age of 16 from operating. They prohibit use on A1A. They prohibit micro mobility devices, which is rental from the sidewalks. They prohibit displays on the sidewalks. And so you are heavily regulated in terms of use. Now, if you decide that those regulations aren't working, you can prohibit the scooters outright. That's up to you.
Well, let's do it. That's what, that's what I've heard, you know, from all, each of you talking to me. If it's that simple, then let's do it.
How is that gonna work with the shores doing it? I mean, I'm curious.
They do it in the shores, but they come down here.
Right. I mean, they're gonna keep coming down here, right?
Yeah, well, go ahead.
I think if they find out we're doing it, they'll probably do the same thing.
I don't think so.
You don't think that?
No, because the mayor, I saw the mayor over the weekend.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't believe so.
They ride from the shores to Daytona Beach on those scooters. They start in the shores and they come to Daytona.
Well, if we outlaw them, no, they're outlawed. If you start impounding peoples, people who are driving them, then the folks who are renting them would probably stop renting them to.
Because they would be fined.
Make them unlawful throughout the city for operation.
Not the whole city, the beach.
Or the tourist districts, whatever they say.
Just say it on the beach side.
Yeah, in the tourist district. I would still like college students to have access.
There a problem over here?
On Beach Street, they're on Beach Street.
Beach Street too. Problem? Well, I'm okay. Outlaw them on Beach Street and outlaw them on A1A and across the bridge, totally. Let's get rid of them.
If you want to get rid of them, why don't we?
Microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Get this thing moving. If we, want us to work, let us put together a program that'll outline how it impacts the city. I think that's the best thing to do. Then we can bring it back.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Ms. McLaren?
My name is, my name is Robin McLaren. Let me back up. And I'm calling, I'm here today to talk about Suburbia Park, 700 Heinemann Avenue. I have been at that property on Ottawa Drive for the past 50 years and have seen nothing but woods. I have a packet for you all to receive later. And I supply pictures of what 90% of my house looks at every day, which is the vegetation in Suburbia Park. looks at every day, which is the vegetation in Suburbia Park. Now, you're, the tower that was there was on the other end of the park, but it was high. It did not cover the square footage that this silo and eight-foot wall is gonna cover in Suburbia Park that I have to look at for the next rest of my life, because I own the house now. So I'm here to ask you all, well, to give you a little history about Suburbia. Back in the day, Suburbia Park, that field was a softball field for us. We played against Newtown and Midway. We all had a girl softball team. We would practice out there. It's a, it's a non-paying park, meaning it's a free park, so nobody really maintains it the way they should. So now you want to take, now that you've cleaned it up some, we have people coming out there, they're playing flag football, they're Pop Warner Soccer, jogging trail exercise, athletes workout. We do a lot with that park now. The park that you're leaving is a small playground for the little kids and a pavilion and a basketball court. That field is gonna be totally covered with the silo that you're gonna put up for the water tower. So I heard the engineer say they did a 20-year study. Did they come up with an alternate plan to move that park somewhere else because it's being utilized? But the city never put money into it because we don't have enough parking. They're starting to have weddings out there, a lot of parties out there. So the community is using Suburbia Park. So my question is, can we revisit relocating that water silo? Because I, my house, I'm the highest taxpayer in that community. I don't want to see that wall. I don't want to look at the top of the silo and eight-foot wall out of my house every day. And I just asked that you, there's, there's a, there's a group of woods between Madison Avenue and Ginsburg that runs all the way to Clap Morris. Why can't it go in there? Does the city own that property? Do any of you all want a water silo behind your house?
No. Do you all want it?
I don't think so. That's a I saw for me, and I pay the highest taxes in the community, the whole community, a lot of houses.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time has expired.
Your time's up. Okay.
You and I met on this the other day, Ms. McLaren, and I came over to see it and, see what we could work on, and I, I met with the city manager on it today, and we're going to come back out. He's gonna send staff back out. They're gonna tell us exactly where the wall is gonna go, which is what you and I discussed. And they're gonna have another meeting out there, and, and I'll be out there this time, and we're gonna send staff out, and we're gonna see exactly what the plans are. So we are working on it.
And I do have her packets here. We were gonna put them in your mailboxes if you'd...
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Let me ask, is, that, that's still gonna be a water tower?
It's gonna be a tank.
Just be a tank on the ground?
Yeah.
Well, would you rather a tank on the ground or a water tower, is what I'm thinking? Which one is more? Because that was always a tank there.
There's always, we took it down a number of years ago.
Yeah.
Because it got outdated.
Yeah.
But the, there, there...
But it was always a tower.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it's, there are issues with that.
Okay.
But if you want to explain...
Utilities Director, there was a tower there, and those old towers, they're, people are moving towards the ground storage tanks with the pump stations. You can't get the same volume with the towers as you can with the tanks. And currently, the city only has about six hours of capacity in storage for our potable system. And this 5 million gallon tank is going to help us tremendously. It's also centrally located in the city, which is what we need. It's got all of the underground piping that is going to the site because it had the tower there before. So it was a really good spot for this use in regards to the, the water that's needed and the storage that's needed for the system. I will say that we do have an SRF loan that we've obtained for this project, and they've actually given us $1.7 million worth of loan forgiveness towards the project. So it's everyone of y'all's decision, but it is a, it's a good project from a utility standpoint, but I do understand the residents' concern.
Does, does the city own all the, the land that's next to that park?
I do not believe, we just own that one strip that with the park in the front and then the field in the back. And then there's a right-of-way where there's a ditch. And I would have to check, but it's either Volusia County or the DOT that owns that right-of-way.
Look and see what's out there.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna look and see what's out there, Ms. McLaren.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Patricia Hurd, and on deck is John Nicholson.
I'm using my mic, okay? I wish all of you will use your mic too. My name is Patricia Hurd, 822 Vernon Street, Daytona Beach, Florida. I don't know whether I can see what I've written, but I'll try. I'm here tonight to try and bring us together in harmony. I live in the bottom. Some of you know what the bottom is. That is south of International Boulevard and also south of Bellevue. We have always worked together, and when we had Neighborhood Watch, when we had Neighborhood Watch meetings, they were held in the neighborhood, in the neighborhood. You know, about four or five blocks and whatever. But now, they are meeting at the Powell Center, which I will call a community hood meeting. And I wish we can bring this back into the neighborhood of that area. Talking about the streets and everything, MLK and near Orange Avenue. How many of you have been out there and noticed Orange Avenue going north on MLK? When you turn off Orange Avenue, that is a very sharp angle. I have never seen a street designed like that before. I am waiting, I am waiting to see an accident, and hopefully the person will not sue the city because of the design. Also, the street holds water on the west side when it rains, from Orange Avenue, Cherry Street, at least to Magnolia. These are the things that need to be looked at in Meartown, in which we called it then, or part of the bottom. And also, I mentioned the fact that when it rains, what happens? I'm asking, what can be done by people coming into Daytona placing advertising signs up on light walls, on the buildings and everything? What can be done? Have you ridden down Mayor McCloud-Bethune Boulevard and saw the junk? Have you?
Your time is up.
Thank you, and it's so... Have a good...
Yes, ma'am.
Our next speaker is John Nicholson, and on deck is Frederick Brown.
Yeah, Jim, 17 years and you hardly ever use your mic. Several things.
Thanks, John.
The mayor brought up a presentation, and most of what is on Seabreeze is low-hanging fruit. The mildew pressure cleaner, it's done in, in a matter of a day. The entire street, all the mildew can be removed in a day. It is a very structurally, other than the fact that they did not put the wires underground when they should have, it is structurally a very good street. Not much is needed to bring it up to par. As you know, there's probably 40 properties north of Main Street that are going in. Huge properties, the Russian project, there's talk about the, the value of the condos that are going in there. The Marriott is, what do you call it, Regency? Renaissance is gonna be a fantastic project, it's at the end of the street. So there's so much going on in that area that all you need to do is spend some time. I was out this morning, it was mentioned Officer Lee last night, that they were gonna start on the area underneath the bridge. This morning about nine o'clock, sure enough, they were out there picking up all the trash and getting rid of the homeless. I talked to David, and they're gonna go through, remove all the Brazilian peppers where they hide. That area should be a park. There should be a restaurant at the very end of that. There are things that we can do as a city to increase what these people are investing in. I know it's a state-owned area, and we can get it, I'm told, by requesting it. Right now, the only thing that's there is a boat ramp. They need a dog park there. Those two condos right there, the apartments, they have so many dogs, and they're all walking the dogs. That would be an ideal place to put two dog parks, right there at the entrance. There are all kinds of things that can be done with that area. Remember what it was going to be, when they were gonna put that marina there? We should have gone forward with it and put in a park in that area. We on the beach side have very few parks. Most of the parks in the city are in Meartown. We have like three parks, basically, on the beach side. More help from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Frederick Brown, and on deck is Marjorie Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. ...
Anne Frederick Brown, 1508 Crescent Ridge, Daytona Beach. I heard some really good things from the front desk up there. Had to listen in the other room, of course. Managerialism, doing good things for Daytona, I really loved that. And the mayor, standardization, I really loved that too. It's too bad we didn't think about what was good for Daytona back on May 20th of last year, the May 18th managers' meeting, when we decided to favor the son of a former mayor in a petition that was fraudulently submitted with improper facts or lack thereof. It's a shame that we didn't do what was right for Daytona back then. Again, I'm talking about giving away of public land, the last piece of public land on the entire beach side, when staff says that they did the check to see if it conforms with the city comprehensive plan, which states there will be public access every, a minimum of every mile. You've now removed all of them, all for the benefit of one property owner to enhance the sale of his property through an application that was soon run by a law firm from next door. I'm gonna start pointing out who all was involved here, okay? Because I've been, gloves off until now. Okay, you, you all need to know the facts, because I talked to Commissioner Traeger just before the meeting. I asked her why she didn't support this cause, and she gave me an answer that they see, seems to be some confusion about the facts. The facts are very simple. The land belonged to the public, deed it forever. Not just the access, the entire piece of property. It never belonged to the city. It belonged to the public forever. And I'm gonna continue to speak on it, there'll be more of us, there's already legal action being taken. The city will be sued on this, and the city will not win. I just asked the city to do the right thing and rescind that decision from last year. Now, there's several other topics that are really, really important that I need to cover. Much time for the public. Y'all get plenty of time to speak, we only get 150 seconds. Let's talk about what you said, Mr. Mayor, about standardization. We are in a tourist town, as you know. We just killed someone in front of an autodidician at a crosswalk intersection. It's not very standardized. It has horrible lighting. As I told you in the previous meeting, I would like to be on your task force to recommend a better solution.
Our next speaker is Marjorie Johnson, and on deck is Anne Ruby.
Marjorie Johnson, 122 South Key Street. I'm very happy too about this city giving away our public land. You did not contact us, the residents, when you did this. And it only benefited the people that you gave it to, it didn't benefit the residents. What about the taxpayer resident that you overlooked, ignored, and disrespected? This is a disgrace. You should have got in contact with us and let us know what was going on. You need to rescind this because it's a disgrace. Also, I'm here to talk about Zone 6. I've been getting a lot of complaints from the people in the zone. They come to my house daily and weekly, saying that they need to pave the street there on Key Street. It's all cracked up, especially in the 300 block, the 500 block, and all the way down to, to South Street. Also, there is a yard there in the 200 block that has grown up again, six feet tall. It needs to be cut. The residents are complaining that rats and other rodents are in that area. So we are paying you all to do your job, and we need you to get over there, get that yard cut, and spend some of our taxpayers' dollars and reinvest them in our community. We are paying you to do your jobs, we pay you daily, and a lot of you are making a lot of money. The city managers make over $200,000 plus. So we should make sure that everybody is safe in our community and that the people are gaining attention, and they can't even get in touch with their representatives because they're not answering. Also, someone died on the beach side over near Atlantic. You need to do something about that traffic over there, because a pedestrian was killed and another one was injured. You need to find out what is happening with that, because the news journal stated that the governor's highway safety did a survey and said that Volusia County is the most, one of, among the most dangerous nations in the world. So if it's dangerous for the pedestrians that's coming here from out of town, you need to fix it. Thank you.
And our final speaker tonight is Ms. Anne Ruby.
Hi, Anne Ruby, 137 Park Avenue. I was on the boardwalk this weekend, and I have to say that the pavers on the boardwalk, the pavers in the Glen Ritchie Plaza were just stunningly clean and wonderful. And whatever we're doing there, maybe I caught it on a good day, but whatever we're doing there, we should keep doing it. But it was like a before and after picture, when you looked at the pavers on the boardwalk, right next to the paving and the pavement in that park, directly abutting it, before and after. And I just hope that we can make the rest of the beach side be as clean as that looked this weekend. So whatever you're doing there, keep it up. Thank you.
And that was my final speaker for this evening.
Okay, lady. All right. Good night, Daytona Beach.